Want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for June the 27th. I'll ask at this time that everyone please stand. We'll have our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us, the sunshine we've been enjoying outside. We ask that you be with us as we prepare the business of this county. We ask that you give us guidance and direction in how we do the things that we do. Father, we're so blessed here within Rutherford County, but we must always remember that the blessings that we have and enjoy come from you. Watch over, protect us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in your Son's holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's good to see each and every one of you here this morning. We do have some good business to discuss this morning. At this time, we'll ask for the road call and determination of quorum.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Penyon.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson. Edis Reed.
Here.
Have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Approval of minutes, I believe we do not have any minutes this morning to approve. We'll move into item five. Items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Damasi.
No, sir. We don't have any of the regular agenda items that have been deferred.
Okay, we'll move right into item six, which is our new business, starting with item A, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item one, Richmond's Retreat, 231004, 30 lots on 11.7 acres, zoned RM, previously approved, PRD, located along Shovelville Pike. KW Group LLC are the applicants. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everyone. The plan development for this subdivision was approved back under our previous zoning resolution back in 2006. The road configuration has changed slightly, but not enough for staff to feel that a new zoning application or amendment to the plan development was required. This plan that you're seeing before you right now was actually originally considered and approved by the Planning Commission back at their March 26, 2018 meeting. Construction never began on this, so the plan has expired since that time. This will be the last section of this subdivision. The plan really hasn't changed that much from when we first considered it back in 2018. I will say that some of our standards have changed, especially for cul-de-sacs or the elbows on the corners, if you will, of the development. You'll see in your agenda packet that the applicant's design engineer has submitted a letter asking for a waiver to keep the originally approved 100-foot diameter for the cul-de-sacs and elbows, if you will, as opposed to the new standard we have at 110 feet. I believe that they do have someone present here to discuss that. Yes, yeah, I see him back there now. But with that, our other comments have been addressed. I'll turn it over to Mike if he had anything else from an engineering standpoint, but from, just looking at it from a planning and zoning standpoint, the plan itself, except with the exception of the waivers, in good order.
Thank you, Douglas. No, it will make a secondary connection to the west back here to this development, Walnut Grove Farms, I believe, yeah, Walnut Grove Farms. So it will allow another way in and out of this development. There is an entrance on 231, and in the previous sections, we had them adjust the median cut to make it a little safer. If I can get there, I'll show you. So we've had them address that as well, but this, there you go. This entrance was a little offset farther down here, so we worked with TDOT and had them adjust this median cut, and they put in a turn lane as well. So other than that, we're good with their preliminary plan.
Mr. Chairman, KW Group, I'm not familiar with that name. Who are they and what's their address? Where are they from?
It's Steve Knox. He's here in town. He's actually, I think, the president of the Home Builders Association for the local chapter.
I kind of like hearing that, thank you. And the, I guess, the cul-de-sacs, the circles, you said they don't presently meet our standard? Is that correct?
Well, it's, we've recently, if you recall, we upped the cul-de-sacs for the larger fire trucks, but these aren't actual cul-de-sacs. They're more just bins in the road, so I don't think it's as critical as a cul-de-sac needing the full diameter, so a fire truck can still go around the corner safely and not have any issues.
But, but once again, they presently don't meet our standards. If we were looking at this totally brand-new, what do we do?
They would need 40, let's see, 55 feet of asphalt at least instead of 46, so it's a little bit smaller.
Staff is okay with this plan? Josh, you're okay with this plan?
Yes, sir. As Mike said, since these aren't true cul-de-sacs, it doesn't pose a tremendous issue for us.
Very good. Move to approve with staff comments.
Second. Have a motion to approve and a second further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Moving now with item B, submitted for final plat approval. Item one is Chestnut Estate, resub of track 3A, reapproval, 222036, two lots on 6.43 acres, zoned RM, located along Chest Crescent Road. James Cody and Emily Smith, applicants. Includes a waiver for a lot less than five acres located on a private easement for a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant obtained a waiver from the Planning Commission back in January of last year to allow what you're seeing on this plat. The plat actually that went along with it was approved by the Planning Commission back in May of the same year, but was never recorded. Of course, final plat approvals by the Planning Commission expire after 12 months if they are not recorded, so the applicant is seeking reapproval of this plat. The plat really, as you're seeing it, hasn't changed. Now, something that I would like to point out is that there has been an accessory structure built on the property, as Mike is showing right there. So if they are wanting to divide that off, the only way to do that would be to get a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, it might be possible that, you know, if they go ahead and pull a building, we can work with them. I'm not too concerned about that, but that is something that has changed. But regarding the plat itself, it appears to be in good order. They're just looking for reapproval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Messengers, further discussion?
Motion approved with staff comments.
Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it has approved for final plat approval. Item two, Ryan Corran, subdivisions, resubdivision of lots one and three, 232030, two lots on 3.45 acres, zoned RM, located along East Compton Road. RC Lake Rentals, applicant seeking waiver to allow an off-site septic soil easement. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Lots one and three were originally created by a plat back in 2019. The applicant is proposing to resubdivide these lots to keep an existing barn. You can kind of see where they kind of put that existing barn, so it'll stay with lot three as opposed to being on the property with lot one. They're also moving the location of the soil site easement that was shown on the original plat. Apparently, that's where the soil site is, and they're just changing it to reflect what's actually out in the field. But because of the fact that it's moving, we thought it would be more appropriate for the Planning Commission to look at that. Beyond that, I mean, this plat's in good order. Really, that was the only thing that's requiring it to come before the Planning Commission today, is the location of that easement moving slightly. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments. Have a motion to approve with all staff comments. Have a second. Have a second. Further discussion?
Doug, I have a quick question. So there is no longer a lot two?
No, lot two is still there. It's just not shown. It wasn't part of this plat. You can see lot two is right above. Mike's highlighting it on the screen there.
Okay, okay. So they're taking the soil tract from lot two and combining it?
No, what they're doing is they're shifting the, you see where that existing barn is on the plat?
Yes.
Yeah, they're shifting the lot lines around to conclude that with lot three, because it was on lot one originally. And then the soil easement for track two is just moving slightly from where it was originally. So they're not, yeah, the soils are there and the easement is there, it just wasn't plotted correctly based on the last plat.
Gotcha, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, it is approved for final plat approval. Item three, Richland Downs, Section One, Phase Two, 232036, 36 lots on 12.16 acres, zoned PUD, located along Richland, Richardson Road. Richland Downs LLC is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in May of 2021. Section One, Phase One, was approved by the Commission back in March of this year. Again, this is Phase Two of that first section. The plat is in good order. All the comments that we have had been addressed. One comment I will make on this is simply to say that Phase One will have to be recorded before Phase Two, because Phase Two is relying on the right-of-way of Richland Downs Drive right there. Mike's kind of showing that on the screen. The applicant's aware of that, but I just wanted to make sure that got in the record. But the plat itself is in good order, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Messengers?
Doug, there's a note that says lots 21 through 27 and 38 to 52 will require geotechnical. Is that because of sinkholes or just poor soils? Mike, do you recall what?
I believe it was for fill on the lots. Had two or more feet of fill. We try to identify those on the plat now, so the building codes will know to look for a geotechnical compaction report.
Okay, so fill was brought in from the early phase and dumped there?
Yes, sir. And it was under the inspection of a geotech.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments. Motion made to approve, staff comments, and we have a second further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Final plat approval. Moving now to Section C, submitted for site plan approval. Item one, Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building, Christiana, 233019. Construction of a 10,731 square foot public safety building on 3.03 acres. Zone institution located along Parsons Road. Rutherford County is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is not the first of these buildings that we've seen. The county has plans to construct several of these public safety centers throughout the unincorporated area. We have approved some for Rockvale, Kitchell, Walter Hill, and Lascasis, with Rockvale and Kitchell being under construction. The other two?
Almost open.
Almost, yeah.
Lascasis and Walter Hill are under construction.
Okay, so they're all under construction. A couple of them are almost ready for occupancy. But these centers are going to include fire protection, ambulances, shelters for severe storms. This particular center that we're looking at will be located on the same property as Christiana Elementary School, but will have a separate access to Parsons Road. There were several comments that were sent to the design engineer on this particular site plan. Those comments have been addressed. Anything that might be remaining, we'll make sure gets taken care of before building permit, but these do appear to be in good order. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll also ask our Fire Marshal, Josh Sanders, if he had any comments on any of these.
Does this have similar design just from a look as the one that was at Rockvale, being built at Rockvale, using the same footprint across the county?
Yes, sir. These are essentially identical floor plans. The sites differ based on setbacks and stuff like that, depending on the location, but as far as floor plan and design and aesthetics, it should be identical.
Very similar. They've only made some minor changes that whenever you build the first one, I guarantee you the second one will have changes. But the only difference that I'm seeing in what we're seeing in these other buildings is the fact that maybe roof design or change in some, that we took items out that are not necessarily needed within these, and that's the only thing that's there.
The one at High Pass, the one at Rockvale, pretty frequently, and it looks really good, so I like the direction of it. So it's good to hear. I'll make a motion to approve this, subject to all staff comments.
Motion made to approve. Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it approved. Site plan approval. Item two, Eagle Auto Sales and Body Shop, 233020. Construction of a 1,500 building. Conversion of existing residents for an auto sales and body shop of 1.4 acres. Zone CG located on 6237 Shovelville Pike. Amged Moly Solomon is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This property was rezoned by the County Commission back in March of this year to allow for the use that's being proposed on the property. The site plan that you're seeing before you has been reviewed by staff. For the most part, our comments have been addressed. There is one comment I just want to make sure we're clarified on, on the site plan. They have an area behind where they're showing a future parking area. There's a chain link fence there, and it looks like just kind of an open area for grass and everything. I just want to make sure that that's not going to be used for vehicle storage, because that's, that would require probably a higher level of review than what we're currently doing. If it's just going to be a grass area, I'm not so concerned about it. Plus, you can see that there are septic areas over there, so obviously they're not going to want to do anything to interrupt that. But beyond that, from at least a planning and zoning standpoint, the plan's in good order, but we just want to clarify that that's not going to be used for vehicle storage. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, they'll have to go down 231 South and turn around. If they're going south, they'll have to turn around and think, there's not an entrance way.
Right, yeah, there's not, correct.
It's Christiana Road, right there, right?
Right, yeah. And actually, there was a, there was a zoning that was approved right to the north of that, and we saw a site plan for that, and they were wanting a median cut along Shovelville Pike, because it was going to be more of like a convenience center, gas station, kind of a business. But TDOT, we had some discussions with them, and they came back and said it's too close to the existing one over there at Christiana Road, so that they weren't going to approve another one. So all that to say, yes, you're correct in what you were saying on that.
So Doug, this is an existing home residence, I guess, that's being converted to commercial. So they have the zoning for it, but they're going to add another small building. And at what point does the landscape buffer go in? Before they get to CO?
Yeah, that would be before CO. Now, if-
So can they operate before?
They're not supposed to. They're not supposed to. Now, there, let me qualify that just a little. There are times if they're getting ready to open for business, and let's say the time of the year isn't real conducive for planting the landscape material, we do have the ability for them to place a landscape bond, so that when the weather improves, they'll be able to put the landscaping in, and then we would release the bond. But we would have that in the event that it didn't get done. We could call the bond and, or letter credit, I should say, and take care of that. But in the perfect world, it should all be done before they begin operation.
Comments? Our motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve, staff comments. Have a second. Commissioner Everwater, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved. Site plan has approval. We'll move now into Section Seven, staff reports and other business, but the first comes up with a briefing on Plan Rutherford. If you're here this morning to hear that, that report, I do see two commissioners have arrived this morning to hear that, besides those that are members of the commission here. We received word this morning, just at the beginning of this meeting, that Ms. Hill will not be able to be with us this morning due to some personal problems and things she has to deal with, and that will not be heard this morning. But we do appreciate Commissioner Serino and Commissioner James attending and their interest involved in this, and we will be doing that at a later time. So just to let you know that that will not be happening there. But would like to inform you that if you'll go to the agenda of the Planning Commission, there is a full copy on there of what she was going to present, and I urge you to go and take a look at that, because there's a lot of information on the growth of Rutherford County in here. And we were just looking at it again this morning. I'm one of those that whenever I see something that I see on the screen or something within our things that we have to look at here on the iPad, that if I like it, I print it off and I go hard copy. And if you look in my office, you would see I do a lot of hard copy around there. But I did this late last night. I wanted to keep it, because it does contain a whole lot, and those of us that do serve on the steering committee for this, we have an opportunity to be a privilege to a lot of this information. And a lot of this information has a lot to do with the growth of Rutherford County. And I would urge anyone who is interested in this and wants to see what we are looking at and where we're going. In fact, I pulled up one this morning that's on there that deals with, shows a graph of the, of the growth within Rutherford County. And if you will look at that graph and see how we have grown in the past few years, you'll see why we have had to do some of the things we've had to do within the county commission. So it's just, it contains, it's full of a lot of information that I urge you to go and look at, especially those of us here on the Planning Commission. So we will keep you informed when she'll have an opportunity to come back and go over this again, what we're doing Plan Rutherford, and we appreciate those that have come this morning to be with us and be a part of that. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Damasi for the rest of the reports.
Yes, sir, thank you. The other item that we have under staff reports and other business, we'd like to continue the discussion on the private easements and flag lots. I've got these, I can do. Basically, what I'm going to do here is just kind of quickly go over the current regulations that we went over last month, and then kind of start talking about a potential framework that we've discussed among staff, just to kind of get some direction from you all. But then we also want to have more of a question and answer discussion type period as well. So with that, we'll just jump right in. Again, our current regulations, just briefly. For any private easement where approval is not required, these are the criteria for that. A private road and street easement has to be at least 50 feet wide. It can only be for one track of land, which has to be at least five acres in size. If that is done, that can be done by a deed division. We don't have to be involved in it. Most of the ones that we see at the Planning Commission obviously aren't this particular category. They fall into this. This is for any private street or road easement that, again, has to be at least 50 feet wide, but will allow no more than three tracks off of that particular easement. Again, the tracks have to be at least five acres in size, and the developer has to establish an HOA to provide perpetual maintenance of the road, and we see those via subdivision plat. More often than not, on those particular situations, we do see fire hydrant waivers involved, simply because even if they stuck a fire hydrant at the front of the road, some of these lots are so far back, there's no way that they could ever be within 1,000 feet of the hydrant if it's less than five lots, or if it's greater than, they couldn't be within 500 feet. The other category we see are with plan developments. This is like the Del Webb community. We see Southern Harmony. These are all private roads, streets. Resoning to a plan development is required, so the lot size, width, is all determined using the patent book. They don't have to meet the five acre minimum. Private streets do have to be built to the same standards as public streets, and again, the developer has to establish an HOA to provide perpetual maintenance to the road. So that's just a quick overview. We talked about this last month, but I wanted to at least kind of give you just a quick overview of that before moving on. Flag lots, again, I think we all know what a flag lot is. That little drawing there is actually from our zoning ordinance. I tried to put some red lines around the flag lot, just to kind of stand it out just a little bit. You have a long skinny portion, which can be called the flag pole. I've seen it called the stem as well. That has to be at least 50 feet at the road and can taper down, but it cannot taper down to any less than 25 feet. And when you measure the building setback, you don't measure it from the stem, you measure it from the flag, if you will, the wider portion of the lot. So some framework that we've been talking about, possibly, after talking about this amongst staff. Of course, as you know, some of the issues that we were talking about had to do with, do we require, as of right now, the driveways don't require any kind of increased design standards, so we were looking at from a standpoint, is there a time when we would want to see that? If we do, what kind of standards would we want to look at for that? So again, this isn't for any kind of approval today or anything. This is really just kind of a, this is a first stab, just to kind of see, this is the direction we're going. We kind of wanted to get your input onto it, or into it, I should say, just to find out if we're going in the right direction, if you'd like to see something different. I mean, that's why we're here. We would base the improvements to the easement based on the number of lots. So if you had one to five total lots, and that would be including the lot that had the easement where it belonged to them, we wouldn't require any improvements. We would have to see a plat, of course, but there'd be no plan development required for one to five lots. If you look at six to 10 lots, that's when we would look at the possibility of having some sort of improvements, but not up to a county road standard. Again, we would look at that from a plat standpoint, not necessarily a plan development as we would require today, but they would have to have some increased standards to the easement. Anything greater than 10 lots, so 11 lots or greater, we would require to be a PUD and would have to meet the county road standard. So they would be private roads, but they would have a public road standard.
What I don't see in here, Doug, is the current condition of the road. You know, you could have one to five lots and have a, the condition of the road be very bad. A one-lane road, which we've seen across parts of the county, which one to five lots, that would make a difference on a one-lane road. So what I don't see here is the condition of the current road.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm going to kind of get to some of that in the next slide. Maybe not quite how you said it, but you'll just kind of see where I'm going with it. Looking at flag lots, we would limit a flag lot development, if you will, or development that has flag lots, so that the lots themselves, the flag lots, could not be more than 50% in any subdivision. Now, the reason, and let me backtrack a minute. The way, the reason we went with one to five lots for the improvement based on the number of lots was we can do five lots administratively without the need for bringing it to the Planning Commission. That was, we thought five lots might be a, kind of, for consistency. Now, a lot of the times, if they do require other waivers, they would have to come before you regardless of the number of lots. So that wouldn't mean that you would just never see one of the five lots, but that was the rationale behind that. Now, the rationale for the flag lots limiting to 50%, in my mind, I was thinking, okay, somebody has a piece of property and they want to track off one additional track behind it, so you've got a lot up front, a lot in the back. That would be 50%. You know, that was kind of my rationale when I was thinking about that. In those larger developments, we wouldn't allow any of the stems to join. You know, we saw that with one of the plats we looked at last month, I believe it was, at Prairie Sunsets, where they kind of had back-to-back flag lots. So that was a situation we were hoping to avoid. And then for easements, what we were thinking is do not allow more than one private access easement in any subdivision, regardless of the size of the property. Now, all that being said, some of the issues that come up, and I'll kind of jump ahead to talk about what Charlotte was mentioning, for developments of six to 10, or even, especially six to 10 lots, what improvement should be required? Are we looking at minimum base stone, paved surface? Of course, we want to think about fire and emergency vehicle access. How and when are those inspected and by who, which gets into some of the things, I think, Charlotte, you were talking about as far as the condition of the road. Again, that's part of all this, you know, and that's kind of what we're- Again, that, that's part of all this, you know, and that's kind of what we're hoping for some direction. Some other issues that I will point out, with this framework, we are allowing more lots along private easements than we currently do. As of right now, we cap it at three. If we were to go with a framework like this, we would have to change our regulations to allow for more, because as of right now, as you recall, we can do up to three lots off of private easement, everything else is a planned development. If we were to go with something like this, we'd be looking at basically anything up to 10 lots is allowed, and then from there, there would have to be a planned development. Something else to think about, should we keep the minimum lot size at five acres for those type of lots? Should the easement width remain 50 feet? Maintenance is an issue as well. You know, we've already talked about that, and Charlotte, again, gets back to what she was talking about just a moment ago. How do we handle existing private easement developments? If somebody got one approved, two, you know, five, 10 years ago, it's got three or three lots on it already, and they want to get two more lots, do we make them increase the standards of what they had already developed, in a sense, because they're adding more lots at that point? These are just all things to, to consider after we've been really thinking about this. And that's what we're wanting some direction. Again, we're not married to the numbers or even the methodology that we're using, but we want to at least prevent or provide you a direction of where we were looking to go. So with that, I'll just open it up for questions and discussion.
Mr. Everwater.
So I hope I'm not getting too far off into the weeds here, but exactly at what point is a flag lot flagged as a flag lot? If you were in a, a, a bend in the road, a tight bend in the road, or a cul-de-sac and the front of the lots are going to be narrower than the lots in the back, at what point is it a flag lot? I mean, is there a certain number of feet of run, or is it based on width or?
I think it's really based more on width. I wouldn't consider a flag lot one that the skinny portion of the lot couldn't, or could handle a house being located there with appropriate setbacks. You know, when you look at what is considered just a typical flag lot, you know, if you've got a real skinny portion, it's, you know, at the minimum's 25 feet, there's no way you're going to get a house there, and it opens up in the back. Now, if you have an area in the front that could meet the setbacks, everything, and it just opens up way in the back, I wouldn't consider that a flag lot. So I would agree, it's probably based more on width than anything. There's nothing in the ordinance that says the flag lot can, has to run, the stem has to run so many feet or anything like that, but we would look at it from a standpoint of can a building envelope be effectively placed in the skinny portion of the lot? If it can, in my mind at least, I wouldn't consider that a flag lot. Does that answer your question or make any sense?
I, I think so. I mean, I, I can envision scenarios where, you know, it, it could be kind of vague and require some interpretation there, but, you know, thinking if a lot's 26 feet at the street and then slowly widens out to, say, 50 feet over a distance of 100 feet, and then it opens up into big farmland, is that considered a flag lot?
Yeah, well, and I'm not saying those don't exist, because they do. If they were bringing them in today, we would require a minimum of 50 feet at the road. Now, in cul-de-sacs and things, that can be less, that can go down to 40, but there are some older tracks out there that have very limited road frontage, and in those situations, yes, well, I would probably consider those more flagged because they've got a real tiny skinny portion, and as they open up in the back, you know, it, it's almost a case-by-case basis we have to look at them.
Mr.?
Thank you. Doug, my emotional outburst at some of these meetings deal with flag lots where all of these driveways are together, and I've said that that's not a driveway anymore. It becomes a road. This addresses that, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I, I think it goes down that road to, to, to do that. Now, yeah, there may be, I mean, there's always ways to get around anything you come up with, but that's why we were looking at some possibility of not letting flag lots adjoin, and, you know, the stems and everything. We were trying to avoid those kind of things.
I, I think what the direction that we as a county have been going in, in our planning is looking to the future, not looking to the past as to what this county should look like 30 years from now instead of what it looked like 30 years ago, and, and that's part of the process, and that's what I keep referring to, is that we need to develop these plans that are going to suit us into the future and, and not address things right now and in the past. So I, I just wanted to make sure that when we address certain things like flag lots, that we don't see multiple driveways that would cause homeowners and residents problems somewhere in the future. We need to take care of those things up front regardless of the cost. It's the cost of development, and it's going to create a better-looking community and also a better process for homeowners as time goes by and they begin to sell stuff and all those kind of things. So I just wanted to make sure that, from my perspective anyway, that when we're looking at, at development in the future, that we don't see what we've seen, some of those things that we've seen in the past. And, and if I'm not mistaken, there were three or four driveways that touched each other, and that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we, we addressed. And from the way I'm looking at this, it does, and, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm looking at it correctly.
Yeah, I, I believe you are. That's why we put in there about not letting them adjoin, but again, we're, we're still kind of in the infancy of this, so to speak, so obviously, there's room for improvement in this, and we know that, so.
Once again, this is the type of thing that we need to continue to develop, and, and I appreciate staff's effort in, in doing that. The 50%, I, I'm trying to wrap my brain around that. What would that look like, actually?
Well, what we're saying, just kind of boiling it down, if you've got a four-lot subdivision, you can't have more than two lots that are considered flag lots. I, I mean, that, that's about as basic as, as I can think in my mind at least. And again, the rationale that I use behind that was if somebody wanted to have a piece of property and they wanted to do one flag lot behind their property, so they have their property, and then there's another house that goes behind them, then you would have, that would be 50%, because it's a two-lot subdivision. You couldn't have more than, it'd be one flag lot. So that, that was kind of my rationale when I looked at that.
I, I would agree with that 100%. And I just wanted to make sure you're talking about a small subdivision. You mentioned four. Could there be some language put in there that, that says like five lots or something like that? Could, could we address that, that way? The 50% on smaller subdivisions?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, this would apply to any subdivision, not just the smaller ones. It would be even for, you know, somebody comes in with a 50-lot subdivision, they couldn't have. Right now, there is no limit. We don't rarely see those kind of things in the larger subdivisions, but, but yeah, it would apply to any subdivision that would come in.
Josh, what are the minimum requirements from the access for emergency vehicles and stuff, and how do you see this from what you're, as you look at it today and what you need from the emergency aspect of, of this?
Our, our fire apparatus access minimum is 20 feet, so that's 20-foot clear width. So on, that, that's, that's the minimum standard in the fire code. Obviously, that doesn't take into account some of the needs of utilities and stuff like that. Obviously, that's just dealing with fire apparatus access, but we're looking at 20-foot access from whether we're talking about a, a road itself or, you know, commercial drive access. Residential driveways don't typically get consideration from the fire code, but obviously it is a concern for us.
Doug, will you please clarify? You had said something about any division of three. Now, we are approved, but it would go to 10?
Yeah, yeah. Right now, the way the private easements are regulated, you can have up to three off of a private easement. Anything beyond that has to be approved as a planned development. If we were to go with, let me just back up a slide here. If we were to go with this framework here for improvements to the easement itself being based on the number of lots, we wouldn't be limiting it to three anymore. We'd be looking at it essentially one to 10 is what we'd be looking at. The maximum would go from three to 10 without having to do a planned development. So anything greater than 10, we would still say, okay, this has to go before the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, to rezone to a planned development using private streets that are built to county road standards. Six to 10, we would still allow without a planned development, but they would have to have some improved standards to the road or the private street, if you will, the driveway. And one to five, we just wouldn't require any improvements beyond maybe what Josh was just talking about, you know, as far as those minimum standards, and maybe that's how we look at it. There's minimal standards for one to five lots, some additional standards for six to 10, and then once you hit 11, it's county road specification.
Why not make one through 10, Doug? Just one through 10 the same and be at the upper end of it? It's still something you can approve administratively, right? Or is it, is the six where you're saying it needs to come?
The six is where it comes to you anyway. Yeah, six, the sixth lot is where it comes to you anyway. Now, if we do that, I mean, can we do something like you're saying, just make it consistent one through 10? We can do that, but that would mean that the person that only wants to track off one piece of land, it would mean their driveway would have to be built to that same standard, whatever we come up with, be it paving, whatever. So, I, I mean, if that's the direction you want to go, we can certainly look at that. But we were thinking, you know, one to five would be either no improvements or, like we're talking, maybe like a reduced standard after hearing some of Josh's comments. Six to 10 would be not up to county road standards, but maybe a, a little higher standard than what you would do for one to five, but, I mean, that's what we're here to discuss.
Other comments, questions?
Doug, is there any, would you want to see the minimum lot size be increased or decreased, or is five seem to be what works best?
That seems to be consistent from other things we've looked at. I don't know if we need to necessarily need to change anything. I just wanted to throw it out there that these are things that we could look at. I mean, we're not locked into the five acre minimum or even the 50-foot width. You know, again, that's the easement width, not the driveway, but those are just items to, to consider as we're looking at all this, trying to give it more of a comprehensive approach to, to looking through this.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Mike, I'm going to ask you and Jim Everwater and David with their ex, past experience on, on the, this slide, second bullet point, developments of six to 10 lots, what improvement should be required? That first smaller bullet point is minimum base stone or paved surface, et cetera. I, I'm kind of leaning towards for lots above five to have some kind of a reinforced base, whether it's with a fabric or a GeoGrid or a Geocell with some kind of a base stone, because A for Josh's equipment, you know, the more lots you have, the more concrete trucks, the more moving vans you have, the more five acres, you may, you have mo, you know, motorhomes, recreational vehicles. I, I'm thinking, I don't know that it has to be paved, but certainly a good kind of a reinforced base. So I'm, I'm going to ask Jim and David in your construction experience and, and codes experience, is that needed, do you think? Or is that, is that overkill?
I'm kind of leaning towards just a proper base of, you know, the larger stone, two inches and greater sized stone, and then, of course, go over with the smaller rock as you go up. I guess a lot of that depends on what's under that stone, and I guess that's where your fabric comes in, but most of this county is rock. We don't get into a lot of, a lot of swampy land. It almost has to be evaluated individually, you know, it, yeah, it's kind of hard to just make a blanket statement on something like that, but, you know, if you put in six...
Drainage is a big factor, too. If you can keep water away from the road, and like he said, if, if you have some suspect hydric soils, you know, you don't want a fire truck, obviously. You don't want them sinking in that soft soil, so it, for a typical local street, we have a minimum of eight inches of stone, two and a half inches of binder, an inch and a half of surface course. So, but for a driveway, I mean, we could come up with a standard. I'm really interested in, in the city of Clarksville. They have an access plan. I hate to reinvent the wheel when there's already one out there, and I've kind of been gleaning some information off it, but...
Well, would you almost have to have language that, I mean, if you came up with a spec for Clarksville, whatever they're doing, four or six inches, but the key would be somebody has to ensure that you have a good foundation?
Yes, subgrade is, is key.
Yeah, so would that be up to the developer's site engineer or the county engineer or?
I mean, there's, there's all kinds of options. It, you know, when it's a public street or to be a public street in the future, we have our inspectors on site to ensure subgrade is, is sufficient to hold the road up and it won't cause any issues. But for a private driveway, we typically don't. I mean, we could incorporate a requirement, a requirement for a driveway in excess of, in excess of, say, 500 feet or something like that. It has to have a geotechnical engineer report, have them on site and, and, you know, ensure that the, the road is, is, has a sufficient subgrade. And then whatever you put on it, gravel or stone, if, if you have a sufficient subgrade, that's, that's most of the battle, you know? If you know that the ground that you're building it on, you keep the water away from it, it's going to hold up.
Well, so is it, is it as open-ended as stating that for developments of six to 10 lots, that roadway, roadway may be too strong a term, that driveway shall be designed for minimum standards for, you know, a, a tractor trailer or a cement truck or, you pick a vehicle, a construction vehicle, and shall be designed, designed by a civil engineer and then let them decide on what that needs to be? And that way, they'd have to do a subsurface evaluation?
Right.
And then they would be sending you a stamped submittal that would have to be looked at and approved?
Yes, sir.
So basically, we're giving them a, a wheel load and saying, look, man, you got to, it's got to be per this or don't bother.
It's got to support a fire truck, it's got to support a lumber package, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the only way I see to cover everybody's investment there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, just to provide some level of reference on that. So the fire code does provide some specifications for access loading. So in Penix D, it says a fire apparatus access road should be asphalt, concrete, or other approved surface capable of withstanding the loads from a fire apparatus weighing up to 75,000 pounds. So there is some, some language in there that we could, could reference.
I just know during the tornado, I saw situations where I saw our fire trucks had to set out on the road, and firemen had to carry all the equipment distances to get to them because you couldn't, couldn't take that fire truck down some lanes, I called them lanes, due to the fact they wouldn't support them. In fact, it wouldn't hardly support some pickup trucks down some of them. And that's a situation we run into within the county currently.
That's going to be the same with your utility trucks as well. Utility trucks are getting bigger and bigger. I mean, you're, you're way over 75,000 pounds, some of the ones, if you look at Minnesota City Electrics now, they're pretty big.
Couldn't pull the main off some of the houses where they needed to because you couldn't get the truck down there to get it... couldn't get the truck down there to get to them.
That's right.
Chairman, you're just making, I, I feel, again, there's no precedence on where the road starts, or, you know, even one to five, where does the driveway, what's the condition of the driveway before they put the other four houses there? I think of my driveway, you know, it's, it's barely sufficient for my one house. If I put four more on it with no improvements required, there's no way the fire trucks or emergency vehicles or electrical truck could get, could get up my driveway. I think it's dangerous to say no improvements required with nothing in there saying, where does the road start? Or driveway, or?
I think I'm, what we're hearing here is that we got to have some minimum in here to deal with these, these situations.
And Doug, what about those that, you made a point, let's see, potential issues, go over one slide if you can. How, when, and by who, as far as the inspection goes? And that, that to me is a critical part of any standard we make, is who's going to make sure it gets enforced.
Right, and I think that was some of the discussion Mike and, well, Mike and Mike were having regarding the, you know, geotechnical studies, some kind of report, something like that. That's something we would have to decide on.
So I guess, but we go back and try to put in some of the-
Yes, sir. We can look at a distance, maybe if the road, driveway is in excess of 200, 250 feet, it's got to be designed by a civil engineer, have a geotechnical on site, and, you know, certain requirements that it meets, if it has to serve a certain number of lots.
Right. And, and frankly, this is what we were wanting to get to today, was this, this kind of discussion. You know, we want to see what everybody thinks, we want to plan in the right direction. We didn't want to do just a whole ton of work and then come to find out this wasn't the direction you guys really wanted to move forward with anyway. So that's why we kind of kept it just as a, a very loose framework, if you will, and then we're hoping to get some, some feedback from you, and we've gotten that today. So I think we have a, a good direction.
Well, Doug, just, just to circle back around in closing, I think, I think Charlotte's concern is, I, I mean, I know it would be expensive for the one or two lot people to spend that kind of money on, I'll call it a road, but where do you draw the line in terms of safety or utilities? Or just, you know, where, where do you draw that line? Is it okay for two houses, but once you hit three, you got to do? I mean, where, where do you draw that line?
Well, and that was something I was, I was actually thinking. You know, most of the driveways that we see in, say, private subdivisions, you know, outside of, of easements, most of them are going to be paved. That, that's pretty much standard anymore. Now, that doesn't mean you can't have a gravel driveway, but if your house is only, you know, 50, 60 feet off the road, you know, a private driveway probably isn't as, or an improved driveway, I should say, probably isn't as critical of a, of a concern as it would be if your house is a quarter of a mile off the road. So that's a good point. You know, we just need to make sure that what we do, we're not punishing those that this really has no practical benefit for, and those, you know, houses that are a lot closer to the road, but we can, we can work through some of that, I think.
All right, so last question. Should, should we be very conservative on some of our statements here? And we get this one-off where you have a, a generational family that has some property and they want to break off two tracks for family. Could they go before BZA or somebody and ask for a special exception?
Well, what we're talking about here are regulations in the subdivision, subdivision regulations. As such, you could grant waivers here at the Planning Commission for those kind of things. It wouldn't necessarily have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, that being said, something, and I'll qualify that by saying this, those situations do come up where somebody wants to, you know, give out, you know, track off land for family members and those kind of things, and that's all well and good. But I tell, I tell people this all the time, that there is a time coming when the family is no longer going to be the ones that own that property. And while it makes us maybe feel good that we're able to help a family, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. When we're looking more long-term, are we creating a problem for the property owners, you know, 20, 30 years down the road? With private easements, everything's fine when everybody gets along. When you start getting a couple neighbors who can't stand each other, then that's when we start getting calls of people, well, they're blocking my access, and they're not letting me do this, and they're not letting me do that. That's, those are the kind of things that we try to, to plan around to make sure that that doesn't, doesn't happen. Can't always stop it, but I guess all that to say that I don't know if we should make exceptions for those kind of things. I mean, it's a case-by-case basis, because I'm always looking more long-term at these kind of things.
Doug, that's a very good point, and I appreciate you saying it.
Anything else?
Move on that way then, and, and good discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's what we need to be doing and doing here. Did have a text come in here, and there's been questions about the information I had, I put up concerning the Plan Rutherford and how they could find that on the website. It is on the Rutherford County website. You'll want to go to the heading that deals with Public Services. Go to Public Services, go to Planning and Engineering, go to the agenda for the Planning Commission, and go to that agenda, and just go down to Planning Commission, and you'll go to this meeting right here. And that's, that's where you will find that information that I had here this morning concerning Plan Rutherford, giving you that information. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir. Mike, do you have anything?
I have. Anything else that should come before this meeting? Just a reminder that our next Planning Commission meeting will be July 10th here in this room. It'll be at 6 o'clock PM for the commission meeting on July 10th. If there's no other business, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Enjoy that, be safe with what all you're doing, and if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.